Okay, next item, Old Mammoth Road, road gate petition.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so this is something that, you know, we've in Lunandary, I think it's fair to say, have been talking about for a while. There have been concerns on Old Mammoth Road about traffic, safety, speed, and related issues going back decades, as far as I'm aware, long before I became involved in the town. Until recently, almost all of those discussions have taken place at the Traffic Safety Committee. The Traffic Safety Committee has, you know, discussed these concerns at length. There hasn't been a lot done by way of infrastructure improvements over the years. The Police Department has certainly done upgraded enforcement, and that seems to help until it doesn't. And so, you know, after taking office, I heard the same concerns that my predecessor had been hearing and that you all probably have been hearing as well. The matter was discussed at like, three or four Traffic Safety Committee meetings since, just since I took office. And, you know, it reached the point where, at a meeting that I was present at, that you were present at, Mr. Chairman, you know, there had been a lot of talk, but there, one thing was clear, that if certain interventions were to be made, they needed to come from the Town Council. And so, I made a motion that you amended, I believe, Mr. Chairman, to more, to get at the point a little bit more clearly, that the matter, you know, the time for talking at the Traffic Safety Committee was done. It had been gone over ad nauseam for decades, and that, you know, it was time to have a serious discussion about whether certain things should or should not be done. The decision was made at the town level to stripe the road. We heard positively from Mr. Labrou at the last Town Council meeting, he was pleased with that. We've heard as well from people who don't think that that's going to make any difference whatsoever. The discussion that was, that occurred, I believe, when this was first taken up at the Town Council, was, okay, you know, putting a gate in that location is a fairly radical intervention. What might the unintended consequences be? And does the petition that the council has before it reflect the thoughts and opinions of everybody who may be affected by that decision? The directive or consensus from the Town Council was, let's get more of a cross-section of not only people with addresses on Old Mammoth Road, but also people in this general catchment area. And that was the consensus that was relayed to the petitioners. We have since received additional signatures. I believe there's six additional signatures from people not simply on Old Mammoth Road, but in some of those neighborhoods. And that is what brings us here this evening.
All right, so it's just for clarification purposes, Old Mammoth Road is Mammoth Road, and it is where the, one of the original villages of Townmore, it's where the current senior center is, it's where the old north fire station is, and it connects to Grinear Field Road, the Grinear Field Road and Page Road intersection. And specifically, we're talking about the Grinear Field Road, Page Road, four-way intersection.
That's exactly right, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we can level set on where this is. So, what happened at that meeting, in the Traffic Safety Committee meeting that I attended, since one of the other councilors was out of town, is that we let them know only the Town Council can close a road. Nobody else can close a road, nobody can close a decommissioned road, only the Town Council can close a road. The cost of one of these gates is in excess of $50,000?
It's very significant, yes.
So, what was proposed there was, was to put a double line through. So, what I had proposed to them was, is that it's really more of a discussion about what is the village district? I called it the village district. No one, it's the only term I could figure out to refer to it. So that the people who are adjacent and have use of Mammoth Road, how many, you know, citizens are actually affected from what decision may or may not be made? I received numbers today that from Lori Lane to Grinear Field Road, and just north of Grinear Field Road, Mammoth Road going up towards Merrill Farm, and the planner will correct me if I get this wrong, there's about 127 homes.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
So, if we just average two people in there, we, you know, we got 260 people. And I'm sure there's more or less, but something in that area. So, there's 127 homes up there that would be affected. I think what the people who are sitting over here on the right are asking is, is that they, you know, and no one doubts that it's a dangerous intersection, is what is the cause and effect of closing the road? We don't have to do anything tonight. We can also look in and say, I've reviewed their petitions, and I see approximately 24 households out of 127 from the different ones that I've seen, with approximately 40 names signing it with multiple occupants of some homes. So, is this, you know, is this something that we want to continue to have a discussion about? Is it something we want to address? Is it something that we need more documentation on? Is it something we need to hear from the Fire Department, Police Department, and the Public Works Department from? How deep do we want to go on this? Public Works recommended, and the engineer for the town recommended, double stripe the road, and let's see what happens. There's been recommendations about cutting hedges and cutting trees. I'm just repeating everything from the Traffic Safety Committee meeting. Please correct me if I'm wrong here. The question is, tonight, will the council entertain this, and will we continue to investigate it further? Is that the question tonight?
I think that's exactly right. That's what the petition is asking for, and so the decision is exactly that. Is the council prepared to do that, or is the council looking for some lesser intervention first, or at all?
Mike, has anyone asked people how they would feel if a gate is put up, like the people, how they'd be affected? Like, ask the question the opposite way? Meaning, how would they be affected? Would they, how would they be impacted?
I don't know what discussions were had in the course of collecting the signatures. I can tell you that there was, you know, healthy discussion about that at the Traffic Safety Committee meetings. The, you know, concern that I've heard most frequently is just the ability to turn left onto Rockingham Road and go north. Is people use this signalized intersection at Rockingham Road and Grinear Field Road to turn left. And so, if that doesn't exist, how are they going to do that? That's the most frequently expressed concern that I've heard about, hey, we don't want the gate.
Well, if of the 127 homes, everybody would be, probably about 120 of those would be south of Grinear Field Road, more or less.
Yeah, that's about right, yep.
So, 120 homes, let's just say half of them go north and, you know, and want to go left or go right. They would all have to filter out through where the Bacon Barn is now, come to the intersection where North School is, where there is no traffic light, and they would all, if they wanted to go north, they'd all have to make a left.
And if I recall correctly, Mr. Chair, if I may, I heard testimony about people hedging their bets with the, it's not signalized, but the crosswalk, oh, it's red, so I can go and almost disregarding pedestrians as well. Correct?
Right, I recall hearing similar concerns as well. I think you were at probably two or three of the same meetings that I was at, Mr. Vice Chairman, and it certainly, I mean, it's, it felt like the same discussion over and over at the Traffic Safety Committee, which is why I'm glad it's here at this point in time. But, you know, it should also be noted that there have been requests for less significant interventions, such as speed tables, speed bumps, et cetera. And those have been looked at. From an engineering standpoint, we engaged a consultant to review those options, and so we have pros and cons on those different options as well.
All right.
I think we should continue this discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
One of the things that have me concerned is, we also have the senior center up there.
Correct.
Anybody have, these nice folks have come down here. Anybody have any objection to me asking them if they have anything they'd like to say?
Not at all.
Oh, please.
So, gentlemen, if you have a person who is a spokesman or something who would like to speak on this, or any of you want to add your input, where the council stands right now is, is, okay, we'll look further at it and see where it goes. In order to, in order to appropriate money, to be able to do something like this, it's just that we don't just have money in the budget to do it. It would be something that we would have to, we would have to get funded by the taxpayers. But, but we're happy to hear from you since you're here. Come on up. Have you been elected the victim?
We trade off and on.
You both want to come up at the same time?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, whatever you guys want to do. I mean, we're happy to hear from you. You live up there, but you understand what we're saying, right?
Yep, appreciate that. So, I'm Steve Kelly. My wife and I live right on the corner of, right at the intersection of Page and Mammoth.
Just the address.
552.
Thank you.
Ryan Mead, I live at 555 Mammoth Road.
We also happen to be related. He's my son-in-law, so, not that that matters. So, as...
Of course it matters.
It matters to me. It may not matter to you.
That's why it matters.
So, as the Town Manager has stated, we've been dealing with this issue for, we've been in this house for 12 years, and we've probably been to Town Safety Committee, you know, to Traffic Safety Committee meetings for nearly a decade. And it's been, this has been kicked down the road, and kicked around, and, you know...
We're not going to kick anymore.
No, I appreciate that. So, as I listened to what you had to say about the numbers of people in the area and all that, the one thing I have that I struggle with with that is, none of those people live right along Mammoth. And that's where the problem is. It's not just the intersection with the accidents. It's that people use that area to cut through from, from off of Rockingham Road to get to the airport and get back again. So, they're going north and south, they're doing, without exaggeration, 50 miles an hour plus. And Officer Timon in the back would back that up. So, this is a safety issue, because all these houses are 20 feet off the street. So, you know, we settled on the gate, because like Mr. Malaguti said, all the other options that were presented were shot down. Oh, it's too hard to maintain, or it's too, we don't want to do speed bumps, they're not allowed by whatever manual they follow. It's just, you know, it's one thing after another. So, you know, and then, you know, the striping was talked about at the last meeting, at the last Traffic Safety, when John Trotter presented all these options. And we discussed it at length then. And we knew it wasn't going to do anything. You know, there are lines painted all over the streets, all over town. We all know it. Does anybody have a base speed limits? Do they pay attention to any of that stuff?
Well, I would beg to differ that the enforcement people would say they pay attention when they're around.
They pay attention to, you know, they pay attention to enforcement, but running a stripe down the middle of the road is a waste of money. It was in this case. I was, and I emailed Mike last week, I was passed after dark on Mammoth Road, as I've been three or four times in the course of the last few years. People passed me, because I'm doing the speed limit, and they want to do 50. You know, the only thing the lines did was made it easier for them to pass me in the dark, because they have the nice reflective side, so they don't have to worry about running off the road. So, something needs to be done, one way or another. I don't know what that is. I thought we were settling on a gate, but, you know, it seems like there's a lot of hesitation in that. I understand that it's inconvenient, it's inconvenient for me. I work down in Belmont. I go out Grinear Field every morning to go get on a return bike. I'll have to find another way. I'm okay with that. Other people may not be. But, you know, something's got to be done, other than pushing this off to another meeting. I'm sorry.
I hope you understand, we're not trying to push it off.
I know.
We're getting it for the first time.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And, you know, my frustration carries over from a decade of dealing with this, so I apologize if it's dropping on you, but, you know.
It's dropping in the right place. At least, we'll at least make a decision, because we have to make a decision. And we have the authority to make the decision. So, I do appreciate what you're saying, but it's not going to, it's not going to be a thing where we're just going to push it off. You're going to get a decision one way or the other.
Okay.
That much I can promise you.
What we're looking for is a solution, just to be clear. Whether it's a gate or not, something to stop, the biggest issue is the cut-throughs. It's people that don't live in this area that are getting out to their jobs at the airport, or, you know, in that, and primarily the airport. And it's trucks, we have tractor-trailers that come down there illegally, going, you know, FedEx trucks, they do. They're coming off of the airport, and they come down, they come south, and they come north. Because they either don't know or don't care that it's no through trucking. So, and it's, it's a hard enforcement area, because it's a, you know, it's mixed commercial and residential. You've got Wallboard Supply, which is now L&amp;W, or whatever it is. So, you have, you know, they have the excuse, oh, I'm delivering here, I'm delivering there. There's no way to really, you know, keep track of who's supposed to be there or not. But, we know, because you see people at tractor-trailers that are not supposed to be there. So...
Okay, I understand.
Okay, appreciate your time.
No, no, very much appreciated. I mean, you do, I mean, folks realize, you don't necessarily have to call 911. You can call 432-1118, because it's the non-emergency number into the police station. If someone's coming down there and you call, they will respond. You know, if someone passes you on a double line, and you have a phone in your car, and you call 603-432-1111, because then it's an emergency. It doesn't go through the 911 system, and, you know, it comes directly into our dispatch center. I've been passed on High Range Road, which is 30 miles an hour by somebody like that. I picked up the phone and called, and they pulled him over by the airport. So, I mean, they're here to serve, and they do a great job. Call them.
Yeah.
Absolutely call them.
No complaints with the police. They've been, they've been good about enforcement and trying to keep this, trying to keep things under control. But, you know, they leave, and 10 minutes later, they're back to the same nonsense, so...
I understand. I appreciate it. Yes, sir.
As the Town Manager shared, this has been an issue for a long time. One of the things that I asked for is what the timeframe would be after the line striping to determine whether it was effective or not, so that we can move to Plan B, knowing that it would not be effective. I'm looking for a timeframe.
Sorry, I can't give you a timeframe. I mean, so let me give you an example.
Please.
We're in budget season right now. So, let's say the gate costs $50,000. I'm just using a number. Maybe it's $80,000. I really don't know. We have to go ask the voters for that money. So, and we have, we have an election in March. So, we have an election, as an example, let's say, next meeting, we decided to ask the voters for the money to put a gate up, just as an example. And it got approved in March. We don't get allocation to that money until July 1st. So, you can kind of see where I'm going, right?
Not for when the solution would be implemented, but when a decision would be made to take an action or inaction by this council.
Well, what I'm going to do is, after there's other people that are going to speak, I'm going to ask the council how they want to proceed. And what I'm going to ask them to do is, is that, ask them to direct the Town Manager to go to the Fire Department, and the Police Department, and the Public Works Department, and get us cold, hard facts and numbers, and tell us where we stand. Tell us what our alternate solutions are. If we can put these speed things in the road, and maybe, maybe that costs $5,000, and we can do that out of our operating budget. Or, you know, but if we're going to do something as drastic as closing the road, then we're going to notice it, we're going to have public hearings for it, we're going to send, we're going to send letters out to the 127 people, and then we're going to listen to what everybody has to say. That's, that's going to take a process. That process is, you know, I don't, could take two to three months? Is that, is that about right?
Well, they'll notice it.
I think certainly, if, yes.
So, so that's kind of how government moves.
Yep.
So, I mean, the good news is, is you'll get an answer at the end. You said you've been going Traffic Safety Committee meetings for years. This isn't going to take years. We're going, we're going to tell you one way or the other, you know, what we, what we can and we can't do. We may come down and say, we're going to do speed bumps, even though Public Works doesn't like that, and they're going to have to figure it out from a plowing standpoint, because we don't want to spend $80,000, you know, of your money, you know, putting up a gate, which is going to change the traffic for everybody in the entire area.
Sure.
So, but, you know, we don't know the answer to that. And I understand your frustration, because you've been talking about this for years. We got it 15 minutes ago.
Right. One thing, just, just to, you know, in the considerations, there are apartments that would like to go in there, and, you know, that's going to...
You saw me at the meeting.
Yep. Not everyone was there. That's going to add more traffic. So, whether it's, it's speed, it's got to be something.
You got my point of view at that meeting, right, in public?
Yep, I did. All right, thank you.
No, and it's not that we, it's, we get it. I think we get it. At least I get it.
Yep.
You know, we just need to figure out what's, what's the right answer. And we may, you know, we tried striping, maybe that was wrong, but at least we tried something.
Yes, I just wanted the when.
I can promise you one thing.
For a decision.
As long as I'm sitting here, we're going to progress. We're not going to wait. That's the one promise I can make you.
That's a good one. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who would like to talk about this?
Hello? Eric Moran.
I just need name and address, sir.
528 Mammoth Road.
Thank you, sir.
I was all for the gate, and I still kind of am, but the issue we have is, it's going to create a little bit of a safety issue. I have an alternative that might be even better, it might work for everyone.
Sounds great. We're more than open to it.
I don't know if you can bring that back up to the intersection that we're looking at closing.
Right there.
You want the aerial, or the?
That's perfect. I don't know if you folks can see that.
Yeah, feel free.
Yep. If we could close this side, so no one from Grinear Field could turn down this road, and no one from going north could turn towards the airport.
Could you come to this one instead, actually?
Yeah, yeah, it's... Yeah, if we could put something here that would block this, it would stop the traffic from coming to the airport, which is everybody's issue. And it also would stop the traffic from the airport coming back down. So, like a no. If we only closed half of the road, so that way we could get out, let's say the elderly could still go to the light that's safer for them to go north, but yet stopping all the traffic from going to and from the airport, we close half of the road. So, that way, anybody, that would be safe for everybody to get out of this area, to go towards Manchester, let's say. But, you can't come back that way, you'd have to come back around, or if you're coming back home, but it would stop the traffic.
We'll have to talk to the fire chief, because the fire station's right up the street.
I think that would be, that would be the alternate, because everybody...
Hey, it's an interesting idea.
Yeah. I think that would be the only way that would create a safe way of doing what we're trying to do, and still let us get out of our neighborhood going north, because going by the Bacon Barn is a death trap.
Well, that's kind of what we think, too.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we'll have to talk to the fire chief, because as you know, you know, the north station is right up there.
Correct.
So, I mean, we'll have to talk to, talk to them.
Maybe we make it so it's not a huge, something that the truck could still drive over if he had to. You know what I mean?
You know what? There's, every, everything's possible. You know, we just need to work our way through it.
Yeah, because they have these things in Cambridge where they have these plastic posts...
Yep.
Where cars can't really drive over them, but a fire truck, it won't even affect them. They'll go right over that thing.
Okay.
So, that's, that's a way to avoid all the speed bumps and all this other stuff, and it would, it'd probably solve 90% of our problems.
Okay.
Just an idea.
Hey, listen, it's, all ideas are good, I guess. You're welcome.
Hi, sir, just name and address, please.
Dave Robbins, 532 Mammoth Road. Kind of wanted to talk about, first talk about the, the double stripe and the lines on Mammoth Road when we put them in. I think, I think there was an unintended consequence. I walk to the rail trail every day, at least once, sometimes twice a day. And usually, when I would be walking south towards the rail trail, and I'm walking down with the dog, when there was no line in the road, people, as they drove by, would kind of migrate towards the center of the street, and, you know, you'd have a little bit more room as a pedestrian. With the double yellow line, drivers are really much less likely to cross the yellow line. So, you really got to get off the road. And as we've all discussed, there's not a ton of space up there. You know, you're in someone's front yard, walking down. You know, everybody's pretty good about it, obviously, but, you know, there's not a lot of room to operate there. And that, this particular section, it, again, an unintended consequence, it's probably a little less safe for pedestrians. We don't have a sidewalk, or a curb, or anything up there. I guess, I guess if you take a step back and you look what we're trying to do here on this section of Mammoth Road, what we're trying to do is make it, make it less convenient for people to use the cut-through on Mammoth Road, as opposed to going to Rockingham Road to the light that we spent a ton of money on, right, to give people access to Rockingham Road. My personal thought on it was, if we can, if you could slow traffic down enough, whether it's a speed table, or I would think a stop sign at the rail trail is probably a great idea. It's a little bit of a curve there, people aren't always paying attention, especially in the morning. Throw a stop sign there, and either a speed table, or even another stop sign up at maybe Buckthorn. And you make it so people have to stop twice on that road, you, you know, it'll be easier to go to the light, get to Rockingham Road, and head south, or north, either way. So, that was kind of my, my take on it. Slow them down, make them stop, they'll go the other way, unless you live there, or, you know, you have another purpose for being up there for L&amp;M.
That's, you know, that's reasonable. Let's look at something like that.
Well, thank you. All right.
Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Robyn Stewart. I live at 522 Mammoth, Old Mammoth.
Yes.
I know that, I think, I had spoke to, I think, Dave earlier today, and I guess at one point, there was a suggestion that the other end of the road be closed off, but Bacon Barn didn't, they didn't want to do that, or for some reason.
I hadn't heard anything about the other end of the road.
Well, I think that's just another option. If you have to stop the traffic from just going through, it's, FedEx does it all the time. That light means nothing at 28 any longer, because they can bypass that and just go right down the road. They, they really just, and the the paint on the road, the striping, just makes it look like we're 28. Makes it look like a bigger road for the little cars to go as fast as they want, down the next biggest road, which is us now.
Okay.
And I hope that we'll find a solution, not just a lot of no's, because this really has been, at least 10 years that I've been involved in it.
I can promise you, you'll, you'll get an answer. I don't know what it's going to be. What I can promise you is, is that you won't get a no. You'll, we'll do something. I just don't know what it is. It may be speed tables, it may be the gate, but you'll get a result. And that much I will, this much I can promise you, is I will put it to a vote. And then you'll get an answer, one way or the other, from the council.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If there's someone else from the public?
No, go ahead.
Mr. Town Manager, has there been any discussion about closing the, as she brings up an interesting point, the other end of Mammoth, Old Mammoth Road, near Rockingham Road?
Yes, that is one of the options that was evaluated.
And almost, I mean, it almost makes more sense to do it on that side instead.
Yes, that, we, we had our consultant look at that. It was discussed, I believe, at a Traffic Safety Committee meeting. My recollection was not recommended by the traffic consultant based on other, you know, second-order effects that that would create.
I'd like to see that report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that report, Mike.
Yep, yep.
I mean, if anything, I mean, it'd be also be interesting to know if we could do, I don't know how much the, what it would be costing for the traffic study of, I don't know, the direction that we're seeing, a lot of the speed offenders and the crash, accident crashing off endings are coming from. But, I mean...
Right, so the PD...
Very well, they could be coming from Rockingham Road more than from Grinear Field.
Right. The PD does have very good accident information about, you know, frequency and cause in, at this intersection.
That'd be wonderful to have.
The, it just should be noted that the decision that the Traffic Safety Committee took not to, you know, move forward or continue to look at making this a one-way, had nothing to do with the Bacon Barn.
Okay, so so far, what I've heard is, we're looking for accident data. I personally need to know, and I personally need to understand what a speed table is.
Yes.
So that I, so I can visualize that.
Oh, I think we need to, John, I think we need to see what all those options are.
Yeah.
Flashing, I mean, there's a bunch of options there.
Yeah, the stop, the multiple stop signs was an option.
So, so the stop sign one is interesting. The actual cost of a, of an Omnicom gate? So, folks, what an Omnicom gate is, is that when emergency vehicles come, or when the plowing, or when they come to plow, is they'll have a device to raise the gate, and lower the gate, and everything, that'll be able to do that, so they can go through?
The other option, Mr. Chairman, was to make this a four-way stop, as I think it once was.
It was once.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that, I never understood why it stopped being a four-way stop, but that's just me. The, so, and the other thing was, is... The, um, so, and the other thing was, is, um, I believe the last number I heard about putting a, a signal for an intersection was somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For an actual signalized intersection.
Right, and, and the discussion.
Not including any type of, um, landscape work.
That's, I've, I've heard similar numbers. And the discussion as well at the traffic safety committee recognizes that we have, I think, two, at least two issues here. And there's, they're probably have different solutions. The issue is the, the accidents in the intersection. And then the issue of speed along the corridor. Um, I think that, you know, fixing the intersection issue doesn't necessarily, although it could, depending on what the solution is, fix the speed issue along the, the whole length of the road.
Could you please speak to the, if the councils are out with it, can we please speak to the police chief and have a directed patrol sent up there?
Yes.
So that we can, um, we can see what's going on.
The other thing too, John, is there are options. Uh, I'd like to see reports from the police and I'd like to get the police and chief and the fire chief here. I would like to see the accident reports at Old Mammoth and twenty-eight. That intersection and also the reports at Grunier Field Road and Old Mammoth Road.
And can, um,
What about speed guns? Are we able to have them go out there for speed guns to actually trace how fast people are really going?
Well, we can find, we can, we can put, well, it's late in the season.
Well, and at least get some data on it.
It's late in the season for the cables.
They may have it.
Well, not for cables, but I meant, they have the guns, right?
Well, let's, let's go find out. They may have all this.
Yeah, they may have it. This is the first time it's come to us.
So can you, um, alright, so our next meeting is November twentieth. It has, we have a number of public hearings and everything on that already. Can you, um, put this on the December fourth, um, agenda so that we can, uh, we can revisit this on December, December fourth?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So folks, that's the first, yep, sure. Um, that's the first meeting that, our next meeting is all budgets and everything, so that would be the first meeting we really have time. Please, um, name and address, please.
Melissa Martin, five thirty-seven Mammoth. Um, so I did, I just, hearing this discussion, I just wanna make sure that we're being very careful. That, um, the reason that we're all here is not necessarily, like putting a four-way stop or dealing heavily with that intersection, um, is not really the issue. So I, I live at five thirty-seven Mammoth, which is directly next to the senior center. Um, I actually had to write a formal letter to the bus company a couple of years ago because my children were expected to cross Mammoth Road and wait on the opposite side. And in the wintertime, um, more than once, they had to sort of launch themselves into a swamp because, um, cars were coming so fast past them. And I had to write to the bus company to ask them to change the stop to the other side of the road. Um, I also lost a beloved pet last fall. Um, and, uh, and one of my neighbors was there and saw it happen and the person actually beeped at my cat, froze her in the middle of the road and mowed her down anyway. I think that the double yellow line that is painted, um, has at, actually had the opposite effect. Because now it does make it seem, instead of like more of a rural road, it makes it seem like more of a city road. And people are really misunderstanding the, the, the purpose of that. What we need to do is, I mean, I, I, I love the idea of closing it down at, you know, at Grunier Boulevard there, like where the, where the turnoff is above the, right there. Um, that would be fantastic because that would alleviate any issues of people having to go around and take a left where there's no light, which is a big problem. But the, the intersection is not nearly the issue that the pass-through is. And I think that that's very, very important to note. Like, I don't wanna get lost in, oh yeah, let's put a four-way stop at the intersection. That will do us no good. You know, when I moved there, it was an unpaved road. It was bad. When they paved it, I mean, I, my bedroom faces the road. I lie there sometimes at night and I hear people going easily highway speeds, um, down that street. So it's, it's a, it is, you know, every, everyone's repeating the same thing. It's a very big problem. Um, I personally have been affected in, in significant ways. So I can only imagine, you know, I came home one night, somebody had mowed down somebody's mailbox. Literally just speeding down the street out, out of control. So it's the, it's the speed and the pass-through that needs to be dealt with much more than the actual intersection itself. And I just wanted to assert that.
First of all, I can tell you the police chief's watching. I just got a text from him. It says he has all the accident data and everything and he is sending another directed patrol up there. So he's actually watching and he's just heard everything that you just said.
Okay, I've called the police a couple of times and spoken with them on the dispatch number, not nine one one. Um, and, and they've been very agreeable to coming up and doing patrol up there and increasing patrol up there, um, around the bus situation that happened. And, um, and I, you know, and I've had conversations with them. The problem is they can't be there twenty-four seven, a hundred percent of the time for months and months on end. That can't be expected. And the minute that patrol stops, the, the regulars that are going through, going, going to work every day, they, they know. And they just pick up their speed again.
Oh, again, I, first of all, I'm sorry about your pet.
Thank you.
I do promise, we're, we're gonna do something. I just don't know what it is. The good news is, is that it's got everybody's attention.
Good.
So, so thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, Dave.
There's more residents.
Nope.
I just wanted to shed a little bit of light on, you know, some of the conversation I had today and some of the things I've heard at the traffic safety committee myself. Being a department that has to maintain things, the gates obviously are problematic, uh, in the wintertime and perhaps even so much for a fire department that needs to respond in there. I do like the idea of the restricted one end, uh, you know, so that people can't take the left at the end. But, um, I think the fire department can probably weigh in better on that. I can, we, plowing snow, we can work around it. It would be a problem, but we could figure it out. The, the more logical, uh, but perhaps more expensive option in my mind that would satisfy a lot of the concerns for the cut-through. Cause the majority of the cut-through is people that are traveling north, either heading over to the airport to avoid the light. Uh, would be to put not a gate, but a cul-de-sac at the end of Mammoth Road at Rockingham Road. I, Mike, if you could zoom in on that area.
Zoom in down by Butrick Village.
Yeah, no, you're going the wrong way. Yeah, right down in there. I mean, zoom right in on that. You know, whether if we have the right-of-way there to do or land take or whatnot. And the reason why you need a cul-de-sac is because what it would do would, would any of the, the, the trucks that need to deliver to some of the commercial business up there, they would clearly then have to go to the light, take a left at the light, come up and then come back, and then come down Mammoth Road. Should they not wanna go back out the way that they came in and decide to take a right, if we dead-end it or have a gate, now you've got a serious situation where tractor-trailer trucks are backing up. Or perhaps they even try to go down the narrower stretch of road that the Bacon Barn is in. So we would obviously have to have a cul-de-sac in that area. Whether or not that can be done, it could be another option, but it's certainly, uh, gonna be a more costly one. And then you would obviously have to change the, you know, the, uh, the description of the road and what have you. And to answer the speed humps, speed bumps, uh, situation.
Also have a force beam right there, don't we?
Yeah, so there's, I, I think there's a pump station as well and, and what have you, so. But it's something that, that, that could be looked at. And I believe it may even have been, so, um, I don't wanna speak to that, but it, it obviously could be fairly costly. But it would solve a lot of that cut-through crisis. It would solve not having a mechanical gate that can break and batteries gotta get changed and things of that nature. It can solve a lot of response issues, plowing problems. Um, if we had to call, if we cul-de-sac it or did anything, it would be at that end. The other thing in speed bumps, they are not allowed by law, um, in, in, in roadways and right-of-ways. You can, in, in certain situations, if they meet the criteria, as I understand it, you can have, uh, speed humps or slash speed tables. And the difference with that is, is what you, you need to allow is you need to have enough span to allow for a car to enter up onto it, plane out and then come back down off of it. So you're not just going ba-bang over a speed bump. You have to slow down. There's gonna be a lot of signage for that, a lot of markings for that, uh, so that people don't come down there and hit that thing doing fifty miles an hour and they land in your living room. There needs to be perhaps lighting for that and, and whatnot. And I will tell you that, you know, the tractor-trailers that do go over that or landscape trailers, uh, make quite a bit of noise. So I just wanna bring that to the attention that if you're advocating for that or if that is the decision that we decide to do, when landscape trailers go over those things, ungodly, the, the tailgates are rattling, the equipment's rattling. And likewise on the, uh, tractor-trailer units, the doors, the latches, they, you know, you get a lot of, a lot of noise. So just wanna make sure that everybody understands what they're talking about when we're, you know, when you're making these types of decisions.
Do you know where the CVS is and the Chinese restaurant is on, on South Willow? And then there's a road that goes up to Memorial?
Mm-hmm.
Are those speed tables?
Those are speed tables. Yep. In fact, there's a neighborhood back that cuts through from Brown Ave up over to South Willow, which I drive over a thousand times. My mother-in-law lives down there. Well, I don't drive that much because I don't see my mother-in-law that much, but on the occasion, I go to visit my mother-in-law. They have them. Um, and, uh, you know, they're scoured quite a bit. They have quite a bit of them through that neighborhood. Um, I'm sure it was a similar situation just like that, like, just like this where people, you know, they wanna avoid the lights on South Willow, uh, and I'm sorry, Brown Ave down in that area. It cuts from South Willow over to Brown Ave over by the, uh, around the backside of the airport and the post office. Correct.
So you folks know what we're talking about so you can go see what speed tables look like? Now, now that I know what a speed table is?
And, and the biggest, the biggest complaint that, the biggest complaint that people talk about is the, is the, the, the trailers that go over them. Especially the landscape trailers, box trailers and things of that nature. Cause your tailgates, everything's rattling when they're going over those things. So, you know, um, if one gets located right in front of your house and you're that close to the road, then that's some of the things that you may be experiencing in the middle of the night or during the course of the day.
Well, and I think the other thing you may forgot to mention is during the wintertime, plow guys may not fully be aware of them and may dig them up.
Oh, we'll know where they are. Trust me. You, you hit them once. Uh, yeah, but they, but the problem is.
They're gonna take some damage over time.
They, they scour quite a bit. The, the plows are angled so they don't go over them, you know, square enough. So they get scoured a lot. So there'll be a lot of future maintenance requirements and sometimes we'll have to dig them out and repave the approaches and what have you. Uh, they should be painted, you know, the bright yellow, uh, or, or striped, you know, um, with diagonal type patterns so that you see them. Uh, you see them extensively if you wanna see a lot of them. Uh, you can go to any college campus. They, they use them quite a bit on college campuses. U and H has a lot of them. Dover area and stuff like that. So you can go up there and, and take a look at them. And I, I, I say in, in U and H too, uh, they don't paint them well at all and. Been, been a while since I roamed the campus of U and H, uh, quite some time. And I didn't remember them last time I went through there. Uh, they caught, they caught me, but they caught me by surprise, so, um, but yeah, but those are, those are typical uses that you see, uh, in, in, in dense areas like this, so.
I will say, I do really like his idea of the cul-de-sac at the bottom of Old Mammoth Road.
Well, I, I like to take maintenance out of things. Uh, you keep things simple, use the KISS method, you know? And, uh, you know, if we don't have moving parts like mechanical gates and, um, and we eliminate the cut-through, you know, as long as we provide an ability for somebody to safely turn around like, oh, I forgot this is a dead end. They turn around, they go back out the other way. Um, it will force a lot more traffic, obviously, for the people that are up at that intersection, uh, at Page and Grunier Field. That all of your traffic that's, is gonna come now past your house and then back out that way. But again, uh, probably at a much lower rate of speed and it'll certainly eliminate the cut-throughs, so.
Alright, so basically what we've heard is all options are on the table. We need some costs associated to them. We need to hear from multiple department heads. And we need to try to put that on the agenda for, not try, put it on the agenda for, uh, December twenty-fourth.
Will do.
And can they send me the, uh, traffic study, please? Same here, please?
Same.
Don't worry, Tony. I'm gonna talk about the electronic sign. Anything else, folks? Yes?
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, one way or another, we're gonna get, uh, we're gonna get to an answer. It just may not be very pretty. Process, that is.
Luckily, you've been having a car land in your front yard six times a year.
I, I hear you. I absolutely hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.